It has been the honor of my lifetime to be able to begin these meetings. Could you please call the roll, Kathy?
Bird.
President.
Peters.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Trithuie.
Here.
Lynn.
Here.
Corbin. Hookstra.
Here.
Clomparnes.
Here.
Mayor de Boer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, we're going to do a couple of things that we have done for decades. We'll begin with an opening prayer led by our colleague, Councilmember Garcia, and then we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. We would love it if you would join us by standing.
Gracious and loving Father, we thank you just for the opportunity to gather once again as one another as we, as we make some decisions. Although our agenda isn't heavy today, we know that every, every time we gather together, there's still much at stake. And we want to honor the citizens of our city. We want to do things prudently, but with much wisdom. And we just ask that your spirit would be with us every time we gather to make these decisions. In Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Raul. And now we're going to do the consent agenda. That is a list of items that we plan on handling as one unit as a council. But perhaps in the reading of that, you hear an item that you came here specifically to address. If that's the case, at the end of the reading of the consent agenda, we'll offer the podium and you can come forward, give us your name and address, and tell us which item you would like pulled from consent. And then we will handle that one as it appears on the agenda in the back of the room. So Kathy, could you please read the consent agenda?
For A, to excuse the absence of Councilmember Corbin. For B, to approve the minutes of the October 16th regular meeting and October 30th, 2019 study session. For C, to accept and file executed oaths of office from various boards and commissions. 12D2, to adopt a resolution approving a small distillery license for Big Lake Brewery located at 13 West 7th Street. 12E 1.1, to adopt a resolution supporting the maintenance work to be performed on the Ottegan Inter County Drain at a not-to-exceed expense of $14,290, and that this amount be appropriated from the street's operating budget. 12E 4.1, to adopt a resolution to place deliquor ordinance violation invoices on the winter 2019 property tax bills. 12E 4.2, to approve the interest rate for non-bonded capital improvement special assessment rolls and the interest rate on special assessments for the fill-in gap program to be set at 3.25% effective November 1, 2019. 12E 4.3, to accept the quarterly investment report for the first quarter of the fiscal year, July through September 2019, as presented. 12E 4.4, to approve the purchase of an MT-7 trackless tractor with snow blower and plow from Bell Equipment Company at a cost of $147,350 to be paid from the Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. 12E 4.5, to approve the purchase of two 2020 Ford Police and Scepter Utility All-Wheel Drive Vehicles from Signature Ford at a cost of $80,812 to be paid from the Centralized Vehicle Equipment Fund. 12E 4.6, to approve the purchase of a Hunter Tire Changer Wheel Balancer from Mohawk Resources LTD at a cost of $17,761.63 and amend the Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. 12E 4.7, to approve the Barber Ford bids to purchase three Ford F-250 pickup trucks with plows at a cost of $35,807 each and one Ford F-150 pickup truck with topper at a cost of $37,236.69 for, for a total purchase cost of $144,657.69 to be funded from the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund. 12E 6.2, to approve the bid from GDK Construction for $70,600 with an additional contingency of $7,060 for the City Managers and Mayor's Office renovation project to be funded from the Municipal Capital Improvement Fund. 12E 6.3, to approve a revocable license agreement with the Sherwin-Williams Company for the installation of three monitoring wells along the south side of East Fortio Street, between 54th Street and Brooks Avenue and 1014 Waverly Road.
Thank you, Kathy. Now, perhaps one of those items was interesting to you this evening and you'd like it handled as it appears in the agenda. If that's the case, please make your way to the podium. Give us your name and address and which item you would like pulled from the consent agenda. Seeing none, we move to council. Anyone want to take anything off consent from council? I guess not. We need a motion then.
Motion to adopt. I'll continue my motion.
Thank you. Go right ahead, Mark.
Motion to adopt agenda as read.
Moved by Trithuie, supported by Bird. Could you call the roll, please, Kathy?
Peters.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Trithuie.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Clomparnes.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Mayor de Boer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment, this is the time in the agenda when you can come and talk about whatever you'd like in the council meeting, except for things that we are going to handle later on the agenda. You're welcome to make your way to the podium. Same rules apply, your name and address. And then there are little lights. There's a green light for go, a yellow light that means you're down to a one minute left, and a red light means your time is up. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jen Greenley. My husband's Bruce Greenley. We live in North Holland. And we would like to call Mayor de Boer to the floor. We have a gift to present to you this evening on behalf of our grateful community constituents and those of us who have personally witnessed genuine altruistic character from a God-honoring lady, our mayor, you, Nancy de Boer. Like a royal ambassador, you have displayed diplomatic interactions and consistent maturity and character with truth and grace despite misperceptions and misunderstandings. You have, you have represented the city of Holland well, at home and abroad, never compromising the word of God or your faith in Him, but with determination to move Holland forward holistically. Knowing full well, you represent Jesus in your daily walk and trustful talk. We therefore acknowledge your 14 years of service, especially your past four years of mayoral leadership for which you have been very faithful. So we present to you this gift, a plaque. This plaque we present to Nancy de Boer in commemoration of your outstanding leadership and service as Holland's first female mayor, 2015 to 2019, Act 1728, "In Him We Live and Move and Have Our Being." Thank you.
Anne Hunrigson from New Zealand, 338 Royal Park Drive. And we have a gift for you to, from the community. I had the pleasure of knocking on a lot of doors and the interactions of people talking about how they had met you and how they knew you and, and many exciting involvements with you and your kindness as well. But there's a hallmark for you, and that is unity. And unity in community and community in unity. And I want to thank you for that because that has been consistent and hopefully we can carry that on. The other thing is the city council, we commend you. A lot of people in the community just think of figurehead, but rather so many that I've talked to have been thankful for all the hard work that you do. And I know this is something that Nancy would want said today. It's not just her day. It's something that you've done also in the four years that she's been mayor. So thank you also.
Keith Scott. I live at 29 East 6th Street. And on behalf of my wife, I know I speak for her as well. I normally don't, but I am tonight. We just want to say thanks to Mayor de Boer for her outstanding service to the city of Holland. She is an amazing woman. I know she's going to stay living here and we're going to be blessed by her being here. Yesterday, I was with my grandchild and, and we ran across the word integrity. And he said, "Well, what does that mean?" So we looked it up in the dictionary. Your picture was right next to it. Okay? That's what we think of Nancy. She is just a great, great person. We do want to thank her for her leadership and also want to commend all of you for your service to the city of Holland. It's not a fun job. I know a lot of times you take a lot of heat and we just are thankful that there are people willing to serve. So thank you to all of you, but especially to Mayor de Boer as she leaves. And I think, I say this personally, she's, every time I see her in a store or I see her in a restaurant, from now on, I'm going to be probably saying, "Hi, Mayor." Okay? She's our hometown girl.
Well, I'm not sure how we follow that. Wish we brought a gift. But thank you, Mayor de Boer, for suggesting that we come tonight after coming to our press conference. We are Matt Davis, Rebecca Leclerc. We're co-founders of Holland's new semi-pro soccer team, Tulip City United. So we wanted to come here and just make sure that all of Holland and Holland's council knew about it. So games will start in May of 2020, playing at Holland High. We have Hope College's coaches as our coaching staff. And Holland's own, Holland's own Claus de Boer is part of that coaching staff as a technical director. But the main reason that we felt that this was a good thing for Holland was, you know, we see Holland as a beautifully diverse community that maybe doesn't generally all get together and feel comfortable spending time together. And we thought, what better than the love of soccer? Holland is a huge soccer town. Everybody loves it. So many people play it. And to be able to open up our tryouts, which are November 24th, to everyone within a 50-mile radius to try to try out and be a part of the team and have it look like Holland and have us all to come together and be a community over the game of soccer. That, that is our mission. We are a nonprofit. But also, we feel like it, it would be good for the city of Holland to extend Tulip time beyond to a soccer season and really having something to do in Holland through the summer.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for your time and look forward to seeing you all at the games.
Yes.
You definitely came dressed for it. That's great. Oh, yes, Quincy.
How, how long does the season last?
Could you come back to that microphone? So, I'm sorry, sir. We got a little bit of...
It'll last from May to July. There'll be about seven to eight home games. And then, of course, if they go on to playoffs, it'll extend after that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for our soccer? New soccer group. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming down. Should be an exciting season.
Hello to our distinguished city council. My name is Chris Surphys from Byron Township in Kent County. I'm coming to you to speak about the importance of having a nondiscrimination ordinance that protects the LGBTQ+ community on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity in housing, employment, and public accommodations. The city council first considered but narrowly rejected the ordinance in 2011. Since 2011, public policy as it relates to the LGBTQ community has changed drastically, noting the national recognition of same-sex marriage in all 50 states. And just last night, more than 80 LGBTQ+ candidates were elected nationwide in the 2019 election. Two candidates in the city of Holland were notably not among LGBTQ+ allies that were elected in this election. I would like to thank Mayor Nancy de Boer for your service. But I must note that you and Dr. Vicky Holmes published a propaganda-style flyer that was distributed that attacked the LGBTQ community. You were both not elected in the 2019 election, as you are aware. The voters of Holland want a community that is focused on affordable housing and access and a community that welcomes all people. This would hopefully include the LGBTQ+ community. The voters rejected your message because West Michigan as a region has been focused on diversity and inclusion of the LGBTQ community for quite some time. One of the reasons noted by Amazon for not offering Grand Rapids HQ2 was talent acquisition. One of the issues that affects talent acquisition is whether people feel welcomed in a particular community. This is where a nondiscrimination ordinance that protects the LGBTQ community comes in. In order to be competitive, we must understand that we're competing with Chicago, Detroit, and New York for talent and jobs. In order for people to move here and stay here, we have to have policies that welcome all people, regardless of how they identify and who they love. We have to appreciate and respect all people. The respect I'm talking about is a human rights issue. There are instances all over the country of LGBTQ+ people being beaten, being evicted, being fired, and being told that they are not welcomed here, that they are not welcomed in communities like Holland. In your concession speech, Mayor de Boer, you mentioned, and I paraphrase, that people of different ideologies that are seeking to come to Holland and change it. What you don't see is that you become trapped in your own ideology, is that, is that those people have always been here. The people of Holland know them. They work with them. They are friends with them, at least some of them are. It is not just people that are coming into the community to change the community's values. It is the values of this community. It's the values of this community that are changing, and you are not in alignment with those values in the 2019 election. I thank you for your service to the city of Holland, Mayor de Boer. I want you to think about this as you move forward in this changing community. I urge the entire council to think about passing a new nondiscrimination ordinance that includes protections for the LGBTQ+ community as we move forward with a new mayor, Nathan Buck. Think about how these added protections benefit you, whether it be in terms of economic development or another reason. Someone could perceive you, someone could perceive you to be LGBTQ+ and evict you from your home or fire you from your job. When we stand up as a community and say, "We value inclusion," we are all included in that discussion. I thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Only one person, one time, speaking per person. Anyone else have something for public comment?
Good evening, Mayor de Boer and members of the city council. Jim Story, 344 West 35th, and with my county commission report, quarterly report. Four items I'd like to bring to your attention. The Aligan Board of Commissioners approved a design acquisition for making changes to our courthouse. The courthouse was originally built in 1962, had a major addition in 1994, and hasn't had any major capital improvement since then. Unfortunately, in the world around us, safety concerns have, have risen to a top priority. And so we are going to be building a new entrance that will incorporate, you know, modern security techniques to make sure that, that both the people who work there, people who come there for transacting business with our clerk and treasurer and drain commissioner, and also our court system, you know, are in a safe environment. So we hope to have this completed by the end of 2020, may, may go into the first quarter of 2021. It's a $900,000 change. We also will be constructing what they call Sallyports, which provides for the safe transport of people from our jail to their court-appointed hearings. And other actions, we applied for, in late March, a Department of Natural Resources recreational boating grant for the Kalamazoo Harbor. And we put into it a, for the local share, it's a 50, 50-share requirement. But the local share would be shared by us and the three communities that share Kalamazoo Harbor. And I'm very pleased to say that all three communities have signed on for participating with the county. It's a very important grant because, as you know, Kalamazoo River, including the harbor, was part of an EPA Superfund site. But we, one of our citizens has brought Michigan Tech University's Great Lakes Research Institute to the harbor, and Michigan Tech is really going to execute this grant. We hope, there's very high hopes that some of the sediment sampling that we've already taken, actually was completed in July, that the testing that's now going on will show that contaminant levels have actually fallen below EPA guidelines, thus making the harbor a little bit more appealable. It's a very important economic asset to the county. A lot of, you know, Hollanders do go to Sagatuck and Douglas and, and use the harbor to recreate, in addition, of course, to Lake Mack. But there are 1,800 boat slips in that harbor, and of course, that's a tremendous economic opportunity for us to, you know, to continue to attract people to the area. So I've previously reported on our indigent defense office, hiring a chief public defender, Chad Catalino. I'm pleased to report that we have completed the setup of that office with our partner, Van Buren County. We are the only two-county indigent defense office, one, one office to serve two counties in the state. He completed that setup in late August, about 60 days ahead of the deadline established by the state for us to get that up and running. And, you know, candidly, well ahead of a number of other counties. So very happy with the progress. As a matter of fact, he's being recognized this week in Detroit at a national conference on what they call holistic defense. An indigent not only gets a court, it's not a court-appointed attorney, but also brings a social worker and people to help that person move on with life after his court or her court appearance is, is over. Excuse me. Lately, and as Councilman Corbin can probably fill you in, who, since he's our emergency services director, we've been paying a lot of attention to our shoreline. We've had major damage along the Lake Michigan shore, but from the storms of October. Major damage to our westside park. A beach access ramp has effectively been destroyed and will have to be removed, so it's not a hazard to people visiting that park. And so we're, we are working to make, with the area governments. We have a danger of losing one of our roads. Lakeshore Drive is down to one lane in some parts now because of erosion.
Mayor, one last time, that is five minutes.
Okay. Thank you. So may I conclude with your thing with just saying, only those of us who serve in local public office like I do and you all do can really appreciate the demands on this job. And so Mayor de Boer and Councilman Lynn, Councilman Clomparnes, I personally want to thank you for your service to our citizens and wish you well in the future. I salute our mayor-elect and Councilwoman-elect Nikki and wish them well. But, but thank you for that service on behalf of the Aligan citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks for your report. Anyone else?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Robert Holmes. I live at 1180 Mad Urban Drive. And the gentleman from Kent County, I disagree with a lot of what he was saying. He's making Holland sound like we got a bunch of gang of Nazi skinheads running around persecuting people of other sexual persuasions and that. I've worked in factories on the north side to the south side of town. People who are of a lifestyle alternative to my heterosexual one. If anything, they're given preferential treatment in the factories. They're treated with kid gloves. They get promotions first. Nobody's being persecuted in this town. I mean, I'm not for bashing anybody. I see people in the parks all the time. Nobody's hiding their sexuality in this town because there's no need to. You see male couples and female couples. Nobody's calling them names. Nobody's scratching their cars or anything. I think people from out of the town who don't know the town probably should leave the town to the people that know it. So I just wanted to say, it's not as big of a deal as the outsiders would lead you to believe. Thank you. And thank you also for your service. I've seen you guys act real classy under some real precious situations, and you've done your jobs well.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else? I'm sorry, sir. Only one comment per person, per session. Anyone else? We will close the public comment then and move on to the city managers section, which is about transportation services. We want to talk about the 19th Street tree planting project. Keith, can you tell us about that?
Yeah, and our transportation director, Brian White, is going to come up and give more detail.
Yeah, and our transportation director, Brian White, is going to come up and give more detail. Maybe just because we needed to have something on the regular agenda tonight. But, you know, who wouldn't want to talk to Brian? But also just, you know, this is a neighborhood that went through a long summer. Right? When you do a construction project like they did, that was multifaceted. No one wants to go through that. But I think Brian's going to outline to you a nice completion to that project of replacing a lot of trees out there. So we thought, hey, this is a good thing to maybe just let everybody know about. So thanks, Brian.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, members of the audience and the televised audience as well. Yes, as Keith indicated, it was a rough summer for 19th Street folks. Again, we appreciate everyone working with us on that project. The issues with the asphalt companies that we had earlier this year did not help matters. But we're at the end. And one of the elements that I really look forward to on these reconstruction projects is putting things back together and particularly some of those finishing touches like tree planting. We have, on our last several reconstruction projects, included this element to the project. And I really think it, it brings things to completion, to a good completion. With 19th Street, we want to propose a similar final treatment, and that is approximately 120 trees, not only along 19th Street, but also a piece of Cleveland Avenue as well between 17th and 19th Street. Just a couple of photos there. You can see, you know, this new street, curb and gutter, sidewalk, driveway approaches. There's a lot of stuff that went on underground as well that, again, doesn't get the fanfare and things like that, but is nonetheless nuts and bolts to the city of Holland and, you know, how our residents are fortunate to have those services. So the, the trees will go in the green space between the sidewalk and the curb and gutter, and will really enhance that curb lawn area for those along 19th Street. We did, as part of the project, remove approximately 50 to 60 trees. We're actually proposing, again, to put about 120 here, a few along Cleveland Avenue, and then a couple other places in town. So with that, the recommendation before you, we did have a pretty good bid turnout. The low bidder was Twin Lakes Nursery, and we recommend a ward to them in the amount of $56,821. And that is part of the project budget. We do have to move some things around within that budget. But, but overall, that's within the project budget.
Great, thank you. Every fall you kind of celebrate the birth of a area that you've fixed all summer long, right, Brian?
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, 19th Street looks beautiful. Huge work, despite the asphalt strikes and everything. Thank you for all your work. So moving on to management administrative services, the gifts, Kathy?
Pardon?
Oh, I'm sorry. Wow, get fired. Do we have a motion?
Will we approve the recommendation?
Moved by Hookstra. Supported by Garcia. Any discussion? Could you please call the roll, Kathy? Garcia?
Yes.
Trithuie?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Clomparns?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters? Mayor DeBoer? Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. Let's go on now to management administrative services and rehearse the gifts that have been given. Could you read those for us, Kathy?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Parks and Recreation, coins from the fountain at Cullen Park, $41. Parks and Recreation, Van Ralty Farm Dog Park Project, Van Dyken Family, $10. Wilson Family, $15. Caleb Family, $10. Smith Family, $10. Ballard Family, $20. Vanderploge Family, $100. Malice Family, $100. DeCook Family, $25. Parks and Recreation, Sal Perez Scholarship Program, various anonymous donors, $36. Public Safety Services Department, Police Operations, purchase of a weapon, Holland Police Officers Association, $448. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Thank you, Kathy. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept with appreciation.
Moved by Trithuie.
Support.
Supported by Byrd. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. So we have coins in the fountain. That's the first time I remember one of those. How sweet. And the dog park is bringing in fans. Dutch the Dog video is very successful. That's wonderful. Thank you very much. Moving on to communications from the city manager, Mr. Keith Bendbeek.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do have some things tonight. I know I don't always. And I'd like to open with just my appreciation, echoing, I think, some of the other comments that we've already heard tonight. I appreciate three of you that this is your last meeting tonight. I appreciate the other six too, Scott. I saw that look. But, you know, and it's more than just, you know, I was able to start my job here, working for all of you. But as Mr. Story said tonight, maybe from a diff- from a different perspective, doing this work for 20-some years, I can absolutely say that elected officials, not only putting their name out there to run for office, but then to actually serve in office, I see that in a probably a different way than other people do because the amount of emails and phone calls and staff pestering's and extra meetings and events takes a real dedication. And I've yet in my time met anyone that doesn't do it for the right purpose. And I can absolutely say that Nancy, Brian, and Wayne, you've all done it for the right purpose, and you've done it well and with honor. So thank you. It's my honor to serve for and with you, and I really appreciate that. I will say that we tried to talk all of, all of you in, into this, but I'll make an announcement too. I know Brian was out of town and Wade had some, some conflicts. But as a staff, we kind of approached, and on Monday, November 18, we're just going to have an open house for the community. And Mayor's going to be available and hopefully receiving. She said she would, so receiving people that want to come in and just thank you for your service. So we'll put information out there about that, that on Monday, November 18, from 4:00 to 6:00, we'll just have some simple refreshments here. And, and for the community that want to thank for your, thank all three of you really for your service, but I know there was conflicts, so the mayor will be here that day. Additionally, just a plug, the diversity forum that the city of Holland is doing in partnership with Ottawa County is coming up. That's next week Friday already. And I just got an update today. We're really past the technical day for registration, but maybe if you, if someone calls me, I bet I could get you in yet. But fantastic. It's being held at the Civic Center, and we have 270 attendees, which really blows the doors off prior attendance when it was held just at the county. And largely, that was because of space constraints. And now having it at the Civic Center opens that up. But of those 270 attendees, there was 191 first-time attendees. So really looking forward to that date and hope to see many of you out there. And like I said, if you've forgotten up until now and any of you want to attend, I'm pretty sure we can make that happen for you. We also have a couple of events coming up. And incoming council member Nikki Aaronshorst isn't able to make our other times. So for any of that, any that are interested, I'm sure the crowds will come flowing in tomorrow morning at 10:30. But she will be taking her oath of office tomorrow morning at 10:30, whereby the rest of you, rest of you that were re-elected or elected, that event will be held next week, Monday, November 11, at 5:00. So just, so you're aware of those dates. And then the final thing is, we've been preparing for this for a while, and I had lots of communications today. Certainly want to, with our charter, the way that it happens that the new people take seat pretty quickly after they're elected. Been working on putting an orientation process in place for those newly elected, so we're going to have that. But I know some of you have asked, maybe that haven't had the opportunity or missed opportunity in the past. Part of that process is we'll be setting some dates to go around and tour our various city facilities and meet the department heads and all of our wonderful staff at the locations where they work. I'm not going to invite all of you to orientation because you're all very well-oriented. But when we get to the point of having those tours and set those times and dates, I'm going to let you know that so that if anyone is interested in coming along and maybe hasn't been, been to some of those locations, we'll make that available to all of you. So look for that. It might take a while. There's just a little bit of coordination of schedules that gets a little bit interesting. But when we get those set, I'll make sure to send those out to you also. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Appreciate your leadership. Appreciate you being hired here. I'm looking through my forest of flowers, which is a nice problem to have. But the way you have systemized so many things and keep streamlining the operations at the city, it has been very gratifying to have you on board and, and watch your work and helping us in so many ways. So thank you for being a great CEO of the city. Moving on to communications from the mayor. We have appointments for a couple of boards. Williamson Wallace III is going to be hopefully joining the Police Community Relations Commission for his first full term. And that full term expires December 31, 2022. And Jaclyn Humberger is joining the International Relations Commission for her first full term, and that expires on June 30, 2022. Ms. Humberger will replace Commissioner Joseph Yasasi, who resigned on April 1, 2019. So, and we'd also like you to please accept the reappointment of Marvin Martin Jr. to the Dangerous Structure Hearing Officers for his fifth full term. And that full term expires November 5, 2022. And we also would be asking for the acceptance of the resignation of Joseph Yasasi from the International Relations Commission, who resigned April 1, 2019. So it's recommended that city council approve the appointments of Williamson Wallace III to the Police Community Relations Commission. That term expires December 31, 2022. Jaclyn Humberger to the International Relations Commission, and that term expires June 30, 2022. The reappointment of Marvin Martin Jr. to the Dangerous Structures Hearing Officers. That term expires November 5, 2022. And the resignation of Joseph Yasasi from the International Relations Commission, effective April 1, 2019. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Moved by Trithuie.
Support.
Supported by Hookstra. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. And then we have a proclamation about the Extra Mile Day, which really already happened on November 1, but it didn't work with our meeting. So this was filed on time with the organization, and I just wanted to make the public aware of this. And this is something that's not only on November 1. This should really be every day in Holland, and I think many times it is. Whereas Holland, Michigan is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. Holland, Michigan is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual aspirations, family, friends, and community. And Holland, Michigan is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And Holland, Michigan acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2019. Now therefore, I, Nancy DeBoer, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, do hereby proclaim November 1, 2019 as Extra Mile Day. And I urge every individual in the community to take time to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. And then we also have a proclamation about Small Business Saturday. That is coming up. Whereas the government of Holland, Michigan celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for 64.9% of the net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. Whereas small businesses employ 17.3% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and 94% of the consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community. 90% of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go to small, independently-owned retailers or restaurants that they have not been to before or would not have otherwise tried. 92% of the companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season. 39% of the small business owners say Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. And whereas Holland, Michigan supports our local businesses that create jobs and boost our local economy and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Nancy DeBoer, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, do hereby proclaim November 30, 2019, Small Business Saturday. And we urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. That's really the bread and butter of our community. So many small businesses, the way those people go out on a limb and, and support us in so many ways and hire people and, and make the community a special place to serve people. So I also would want to say thank you to Wayne and Brian and their work on council. It has been an honor and privilege to work with you guys. Appreciate your individuality, not to mention age, but we go on, that's a whole spectrum right there. And we appreciate the insight that you each have based on your life experience and your heart for the community. And I know you don't take what you've done here casually. You see it as a serious effort for the community. We have a sense of humor. We joke around about things sometimes, and we have a good time. But behind it all is a responsibility to do the best thing for this city. And we feel that every meeting from both of you. And I really appreciate serving with you too. And sorry to see your time end. And I have appreciated serving with this whole band of brothers for 14 years. I only had one brother. Now I had eight. And it's been a real privilege for me. This is an amazing community, and I was afraid I was going to do this. But I, it is a wonderful place to live, a wonderful place to serve. And the community here has just inspired me in so many ways. The way people work so hard, the way they work hard to be innovative, that they tackle problems in new ways, that they bring in people that may have absolutely no reason to care about that problem to come in and help solve it, and people do. They ask for money for people, from people, to help them make something work. Maybe we don't have enough tax money to get a project done. We ask people for support. They do. Every meeting I've been here since I've come, we have gifts from the community that the clerk reads. Amazing gifts for all kinds of things. Because there are so many people that care about what happens here and how well it's done and care about people that may not have as much as they do. And are not just willing to say it with lip service, but are willing to pull out their wallet at the same time. It's very inspiring. It's a very inspiring place to live. And that this, we are not where we are today because of our efforts. We are here today because of so many generations. We are here today because of so many generations before us that have worked so hard and sacrificed day and night to be able to have those small businesses, to be able to hire those people, to be able to come up with solutions that we can send to other places and to do it all with integrity. It's a, it's a high standard in this city, but it's so worthwhile. And no matter what the hours, no matter what the controversy, no matter what the reactions to things, it is a city worth working for. It is worth every minute of sacrifice and love, and I have done it with joy. And I've been so grateful for this opportunity. It will be the honor of my lifetime. So I thank everyone that has voted for me over the years and has given me this opportunity. So, um, thank you. It's hard to get close to your heart and not have it splatter. So, um, and you know what? This is probably not the kind of quote that everybody would have, but I ran across this little thing by Fred Rogers, you know, the guy with the red cardigan? Um, in Mr. Rogers' neighborhood. And as much as we all say he's a little bit corny, he is a pretty wise guy. And he said, "I believe that appreciation is a holy thing. That when we look for what's best in a person, the person that we happen to be with at that moment, we're doing what God does all the time. So in loving and appreciating our neighbor, we are participating in something sacred." And I think that's one of the main things that I've always wanted to do, is to find the good in the people around me and encourage it and grow it and appreciate it. And that was one of the things that gave me peace when I first started on council, because I thought, "What in the world are you gonna offer on City Council? You're here because you love the community, but you really don't have a lot of big degrees like a lot of people. You may not sound as smart as a lot of other people, and you never took political science. What are you doing here?" But I really wanted to serve the committee, community. And one of the things that I felt that I could bring was that I love to appreciate and encourage people to find the good in them and to help grow it. And that's one of the main things I think government is all about. It's about punishing the bad, but it's also about celebrating the good. And I think the more that we can do that with each other, to continue to focus on the good in each other and come together to help solve problems and do it with grace and love. We will be the city on a hill that honors all those who came before us to give us this opportunity to serve this area and really ultimately serve the world. Holland is not a casual community. It's here for, and been given this time in history to have a responsibility for the future. And I know, we all feel that. And so I, I leave the seat. It's hard to leave the seat, but I know that my time has finished, and, and I understand that. I felt a call to be here, and I know that that call has ended. I don't know what my next call is. But I know that this group of people will be responsible and care about doing the best thing for the city long-term. And I will certainly be praying for each and all of you and the new people as well as you work to serve this community and to do the very best, to continue to grow it for the future. So I'm very thankful, and I thank God for the opportunity I've had to be a leader in this city. So do we have any communications from council members?
Yes, Madam Mayor. First of all, something that should have been done about a half an hour ago for the audio record. Councilman Corbin was able to join us, just for the audible record.
Were any deers harmed in the?
I also have a, an appointment and a reappointment. And the recommendation City Council have proven, this will be in the form of a motion, to appoint Sandra Brookhouse to the Sustainability Committee, term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty-one, and to reappoint Carolyn Ullsted to the Sustainability Committee, term said to end June thirty, also twenty twenty-one. Ms. Brookhouse is replacing former member Jeff Rayburn, whose term expired May thirty-one of twenty nineteen.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a second to that motion?
Moved, supported by Bird. Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes. Are you done, Mike?
I'm done with that.
All right. Thank you, sir. So do we have any other motions or resolutions by council members?
Resolutions? You can go first.
That's fine. Absolutely. Go for it, Brian.
So, uh, of course I didn't prepare anything because that wouldn't be authentic. I was thinking a lot, a lot of different things, but four years ago, I wasn't married. Somehow convinced my wife to still go through with that, so, um, but starting at twenty-four in the seat was a lot different. And I remember probably, you know, four years and seven weeks before that, I was standing up at that and giving my first, "Hi, my name is Brian. I'm running for council." And it's like you're shaking and you're nervous, and now I love this thing and it's fun. But what's been so cool for me through this period of time, and I was gonna write something down individually for all of you of stuff I learned, and then I realized it's the same, because I'm so impatient. One of the things that's been so fun and has challenged me is learning patience. And all of you are a lot better at that than I am. But it's been fun to have a place where, over the last four years, I've gotten to experience a lot of stuff I wouldn't have anywhere else. Talking about, you know, labor agreements, massive capital projects, what color we're gonna paint the railing at Collin Park, if we spell welcome sign with a K or a C, and you're here till two-thirty in the morning, and trust me, it gets pretty heated. Fishing in the park. Got that done pretty quickly. Crosswalks, paid or unpaid parking. You've never seen somebody just about to throw a fist about something that didn't matter. As quick as whether parking's paid or not. There's been a lot of really fun stuff. We had some legendary public speakers that popped up there, including my man on Allen Drive, Mr. Jim Hospice, who brought a branch, dropped it and said, "Why'd this fall in my yard?" I'm still laughing about that. I saw, this is the public process right here. It was gold. Way too many thanks to keep track of, but I wrote a couple of things down. It's been said a number of times. It is hard to quantify and to articulate. And what became a big piece of why I decided not to seek reelection is just the impact it takes on the people that you care about at home and the time. But not just the time, it's the emails and the phone calls, and if you're doing this, you love this place. And so you take it way too seriously, and so you answer all those emails and phone calls and go down to somebody's house and explain why the plow doesn't come to the end of the cul-de-sac first before main thoroughways and try and do it in a nice way to encourage them. And you, you do all these other things because every single person up here, everybody that ran won or lost, to do this, you gotta be a little nuts. And, but you gotta love this place. And, and that's, that's genuinely true about everyone that's here and everyone that's served on the council while I've been on and has been involved. So to Bree, to my dad, to my mom, all my sisters, my family, it's a huge thank you for letting me do this and, and being a part of this and supporting and hearing me come home and say, "We talked about the railing at this for so long." And she said, "Well, you're still talking about it." And it's like, you know, so, you know, so, you know, that's fun. To, I, I have a couple of groups of people to, I mean, everyone on council, obviously Keith and staff. But then I took a little bit of time when I was driving in a Prius and said, "Hey, who's, who've been some people through the four years that have been really influential and, and have done a lot that not everybody out there might know about?" And I grabbed, there's two sets of two people, so Chief Matt Messer and Greg Robinson. I think both, they stepped up and served this community when we had some, some change and some transition in a way that the average person doesn't fully understand what those two gave up from a home life standpoint and the number of hours and work that, that they put in. And I think that was so important, it put us in a position to be able to, to bring someone like Keith on. And both of those guys gave so much, you know, during that time. That was when we, right now, we're maybe on item number two on the agenda, and we were going till eleven-thirty, twelve at night pretty regularly. They both gave a lot of time and their families and everyone, and it, and it's a huge thank you to both of them. And then two other people for me that have been there all four years that I have no clue why were willing to spend the amount of time with me that they did. Dave Coster and Tim Hemingway. And, and both of them took time as the liaison to the BPW board with the complexity and all the things that are going on with building a power plant to sit down and invest in, in me, to help me understand what role the BPW played. And again, getting to be involved in things that no twenty-four-year-old has a clue what the heck they're doing. And, and for both of them to take the time has, has meant a lot to me and selfishly. You have to pay about a hundred thousand a year at Ross Business School to get what they did for me the last four years in an MBA. And, and, and I genuinely mean that. It's been a huge benefit personally to understand all the stuff that goes on there. And it's given me a huge appreciation for what it means to be a member of this community and a lot of long-term thinking that goes, not five years, ten years, but fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years. And that's been, that's been a trademark of this community, is long-term planning with capital, financial and infrastructure projects. And then finally, I have a quote too. I think it fits perfect, and it's attributed to me. When in doubt, pay down debt. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. That was priceless. Wayne, did you have something?
I don't think I can meet, follow a guy like him, but anyway, I would just like to thank, first of all, my family. My wife Rhonda and my kids, Alex and Abigail, have always been supportive of everything. They've never said, "Oh, you gotta go to another meeting." They've always been there for me. I really appreciated that. Also, I appreciate the citizens of Holland, the good people of Holland, who go to work every day, do their job, raise their families here. They're the backbone of this community, and that's the people that I serve and wanted to serve. And I hope that I haven't offended anybody by any of my votes or anything, because that was never my intent. I attempted to give the rationale as to why I voted the way I did and ask a lot of questions. I probably asked too many questions, but that's how you learn. If you don't ask questions, you don't know. There's no dumb, there's no dumb questions. They're all important. I wanna thank Keith Van Beek and Mayor DeBoer and, and city management and higher level, and also all the department heads have done a really great job, and the people who go to work every day and trim trees and plow snow and plant flowers and... There's just so many people that are involved. People in the offices down here, Tim Vagley does an awesome job explaining finances. Also wanna thank the people, Vicki Lynn Holmes, who ran against me or with me in essence, Lynn Raymond. They were awesome. They, I know both of them. They came to me and said, "Are you gonna run again?" I said, "Well, I, I think I will." And they said, "Well, I don't know if I'll run again or not, if they wanted to run." And I said, "Go for it." And I think you become a stronger candidate when you have somebody running with you for an office. It makes, it makes you challenge and really look at the issues. And both Vicki Lynn and Lynn are great people. Either one of them would have made an excellent councilperson. And I appreciate the people who stuck their neck out. Nathan and Nancy both ran. It takes guts to go out there. When I got beat, I got, came, I was third. And I was the incumbent. It's like, ouch, this really hurt. What did I do wrong? And it took me for a while to come to grips with that. But I have found other things that I can do, and when you give, you get back. And it's good. And I'm really excited about seeing the new people on here. They have a big task in front of them. I do not envy them with budgets and all kinds of things. They're, they're gonna be working really, really hard, and they're gonna need a lot of support from people in this community to make it work. I hope that I was a little small sliver of positive things here. It's been great. I got to do things and meet people I never would have gotten to see. And Ron's gonna tell me that when you give people a microphone, they keep talking, so I'm gonna respect Ron and other people here. All good things come to an end. I had a great opportunity. And I would encourage other people in the community to run for City Council or another kind of, eat, somebody. We need a lot of people to help run the city. It's a good place to be, and they, they treat you nicely and make sure you get out there and get involved. So, thank you, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Wayne. Anyone else? Raul?
Yeah, Nancy, Brian, Wayne, it's, it's been, it's been an honor. It's been a, a privilege to serve with you guys for the first two years of my rodeo here. So thank you for showing me the ropes, Brian. Thank you for showing me what not to do. If I wanna, if I wanna be liked, if I wanna be liked. No, but, and I, you know, I can't, I can't articulate things as well as what you guys have already expressed. I think everything that you say is exactly why we can appreciate the time that we've spent with you. You put it, you put it in words better than any of us could, and so thank you. Thank you for allowing me to spend these last two years with you guys.
Thanks, Raul. Anyone else? Mr. Bellringer. Hookstra?
Your Honor, if I may. Uh, first of all, before I get to you guys, I wanna give a word of thanks to our city clerk and staff for an amazing job yesterday pulling off another excellent election. It's not easy stuff to do. When I voted, it was almost effortless, and everything I heard said it was a great experience. So thank you and your crew for another great job done. I've been around here for a little while, served, I think, under four mayors. We were talking about that. And a whole bunch of council mates. I can't do the math on that anymore, but it's, it's a weird, a little bit of a weird experience when these transitions happen, because everybody brings something different to the, the team. And you come to rely on that stuff and, and know that it's gonna be there. So when people leave, new people come, it's, you know, you gotta relearn things and, and sort of readjust. I don't wanna be long-winded about this, but Wayne, I wanna thank you for having whiter hair than I do. It makes me look better. You've also caused me to think about stuff that I probably wouldn't have thought before in different perspectives. Sometimes I questioned that, but every time it was beneficial to me because you helped me think through things and look at things that I wouldn't normally do. Plus, you're the, the elder educator on the group, and we all looked at you with great respect for that. So I really appreciate all your, your efforts, and it's been fun sitting next to you. Mayor DeBoer, you know, Al McGeehan had the golden tongue, and I don't know if I ever said this to him, but he, you know, bless his heart, he could talk the leg off a chair. And always was a, considered a great cheerleader for the city of Holland. But I think even he would agree that you far eclipsed him in the ability to put the best face of Holland forward and always to portray Holland and its people in the best light possible. You've put a lot of effort into service to this community, and it's been a pleasure to serve with you in that capacity and appreciate all your effort. And Brian, when you were first elected, I thought, "What's the deal with this guy? He's young, seems a little crazy, and I really, I really didn't know what to make of you." But come to find out, you're, you have a very sharp mind and a very sharp wit, and you're always willing to share that wit at the drop of a hat. And, but I, I think the thing that I've come to appreciate you about the most is even when we are at points of disagreement, where we don't say necessarily eye to eye on things, I always felt... I always felt that we could disagree with the highest degree of mutual respect. I always got that from you. I hope I return that too. But I know your dad is here, I just gotta tell you, you did right by this one because he's, he's a good and honorable man. And I'll miss not having you on there. So thank you all for your efforts and your service.
Thank you, Dave. Quincy?
Yes, I, I'll make this short as well. I, before I ever got on council, I served for the HRC committee. And Esther Fofowski told me about this position. And the only thing, I, I really didn't know a lot about it. So one of the people that I served with when I was on the committee was Wayne. Called Wayne up and talked to him for a good little while, and he encouraged me to do this. And as he alluded to your white hair, I, I, I'm thankful for your white hair, all the wisdom that you've brought, the different perspective and the questions that you do ask, they have been enlightening. And I want to thank you for encouraging me, thank you for your wisdom. And at times when I wanted to leave, you had two more questions. They were always good questions, so I, I want to thank you for that. And Brian Lynn, I really am gonna miss you a lot, man.
I voted against getting you on this one.
Yeah, you did. Out of everyone who voted, he was the one who said no. But his wittiness, his, his sense of humor, and not just that, but his very objective thinking, that, that's really gonna be missed on this council. We have three new people coming on. And if they have half of what you have, or any of us can come to that level of half of what you have, I think we're gonna be pretty good. And for a 20, how old are you, 24? 28, I'm sorry.
He's been aging.
For a 28-year-old, actually a 24-year-old coming on, because I got to serve with you except for a few days. And you impressed me from the gate of the wisdom that you have. And again, that's, that's contributed to the upbringing that he has from you and your wife. And a blessing to serve with you as well, man. I, I really mean that from the bottom of my heart. And Nancy DeBoer, Mayor Nancy DeBoer. So this is pretty funny. My kids found out Nancy was not on, gonna be the mayor anymore. And my daughter Daisy, the first thing out of her mouth was, what? We're not gonna be able to go over there after Tulip Time Parade anymore for the party? That was, that was fun. That right there, that first interaction on that first Tulip Time was where I felt I bonded with a lot of council there. You know, as you feel through and muddle through, trying to figure this out, you know, not having any background in council at all. That there was, that whole time, in that Tulip Time week, was very beneficial to me in building camaraderie. And thank you for opening your house, thank you for opening your heart. And as Dave alluded to, the, the way that you present the city of Holland, the enthusiasm, the love, the desire and the servant hood, thank you so much. It's going to be very well missed as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Quincy.
And to all the new council member and the mayor, we welcome you, we welcome you. Thank you, all three of you. Outstanding citizens. Pay your parking tickets.
Thanks, Quincy. Anyone else? Well, oh, Mike?
My other two colleagues aren't going to. It's one of the privileges of being the old guy on here, I get to almost have the last word most of the time. Mr. Clumparnes, 40 years back, you probably never imagined that this young kid, and not Jay, we all know what happened with him, this young man that was in one of your classes you'd be serving with on council. I called you Mr. Clumparnes then? I can't stop now. It's the respect I have for you. You've opened my eyes to a number of things. You've broadened my perspectives. Your consistency, your patience. And sometimes I raise voices at each other. But the great thing about that is, is once the discussion was done, that was it. We move on to the next thing. I appreciate the base that you gave me back at Lincoln School, back in the day. It helped bring me to the point that I am here today. I thank you for that. I thank you for the service that you've given to the city, the commitments, the struggles, the sacrifices to you and your family. I had the pleasure of serving with your daughter for a little while, and Max, she's a chip off the old block. You should be very proud. You will be missed, thank you very much. Mr. Lynn, I'm gonna have to apologize. You gave me a, a charge early on, hoping that your son would learn something from me in, in some categories. I'm afraid I failed you. I tried, I really did. There's only, only so much to work with when he wants to, you know. You did great. Seriously, Brian, you are a good student. You're always, your mind is always open as a sponge to grasp onto things. Then we're gonna have to look for another member for the committee, the audit committee. I appreciate, as other people have said, your quick wit, which your ability to throw numbers into your head and come out with answers very quickly. Being a numbers guy myself, I, I appreciate that. We've had some pretty good discussions. The wisdom that I, that I learned from Mr. Clumparnes, there was an awful lot of wisdom that came out of you also that gave me some different perspectives to look at, different sides of situations. I've served with an awful lot of people, and you're right up there at the top. Thank you very much. I hope this is just a short hiatus for you and you don't totally wither off into the woods. You come back sometime, it'd be great. Nancy, it has been an extreme honor to serve with you all of your 14 years. I remember 14 years ago when you came on. Thinking, who is this schoolteacher that's, that's coming on here? But as with everybody else, if your mind is open enough, you learn something from everybody. And there's a number of things that I learned from you, and I appreciate that. There can never be any question about your love for the city. You gave that 110% in everything you did, whether it be here, whether it be at the state level, whether it be with mayor's exchange, whatever the case may be. You were always there for that and you had the city's best interest at heart. I appreciate the time serving with you, and I know you also will not stand in the weeds for long. Take a little respite and come back strong. Thank you very much. Mr. Clumparnes, Mr. Lynn, Ms. DeBoer, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. It has, has been a real honor to serve with everyone. And I also need to thank my family, my hard-working husband back there. It's really hard to thank people because then I get choked up, but, and my, my kids. And the staff here, just amazing people. They're like my kids too. I have such a deep affection for them. And you watch them grow up in their position and get promoted and they just serve with everything they've got. It's an amazing team to work with. And I, it just, my family just grew bigger being a part of the city and getting to know the staff and, and serving the citizens of Holland. They're all my family, and I'll do anything for them. So it's been very amazing and we're very grateful. And I think I better quit talking. So we have, I guess, one more thing, since we don't have any first reading of ordinances.
Yes, we do, and I, I would like to suspend the rules and ask Mr. Lynn and Mr. Clumparnes to do the honors of assuring us out.
I move we adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. We are adjourned. Thank you for being a part of this.